Item C, receive your report on the 2016 Community Day in the Park event and provide direction to staff regarding the 2017 event funding.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. At its meeting on June 28th, the City Council requested a report on the very successful June 5th, 2016 Community Day in the Park. Specifically requested were costs associated with the event, an evaluation of the day, and recommendations for the delivery of future events. The purpose of this report is to provide this information and seek direction regarding the 2017 event funding. The Third Annual Community Day in the Park was delivered at City Park on Sunday, June 5th. For the first time this year's event was scheduled to follow the Lions Club's 76th Annual Posey Parade. Funding for Community Day was largely provided by the San Bruno Community Foundation. As with past Community Days, the purpose of this event was to bring together the community for an afternoon of camaraderie, fun, food, and music. This year, the event was scheduled to coincide with the Lions Club Posey Parade with the objective of increasing community participation and attendance at both events. Both events were very well attended, with one estimate placing attendance in City Park following the Posey Parade and during Community Day at approximately 2,500 people. As with the past two years, there was live music as well as food, beverages, carnival rides, and community information tables. The total cost of the Third Annual Community Day in the Park was $49,002. Of this amount, $5,608 was for publicity, $24,605 was for six rides, $6,150 for the live bands, the stage and the sound system, and $600 for the county health permit and inspections, and then last but not least, $1,282 for the porta-potties. In addition to the direct cost, staff was assigned overtime on the day of the event to provide traffic control, conduct maintenance activities, ensure public safety, and deliver the field games. This overtime expense totaled $10,756.90. The San Bruno Community Foundation has committed $30,000 to cover the event expenses. Revenue from the ride wristband sales for the event totaled $12,340, with the remaining net cost to the city for the event of $6,662. Staff has completed the initial review of the event and will be meeting later this week with the Lions Club representatives to debrief the Posey Parade and Community Day events. Staff's initial recommendations for next year is to include two additional rides and two additional food vendors to reduce wait times, along with some changes to the layout to improve event circulation. Going forward, the Community Foundation expressed its intent to reduce funding for the event by approximately $5,000 in 2017 and further in subsequent years, and to seek funding from corporate sponsors. The city recently adopted the fiscal year 2016-17 operating budget, which includes $30,000 for the 2017 Community Day event, consisting of $25,000 from the Community Foundation and $5,000 from other donors. Staff has provided the Community Day financial report to the Foundation and has had some initial discussions with the Foundation regarding the total actual cost for the event. The Foundation remains committed to the event and has expressed a continuing interest to work with the city regarding event costs, including potential consideration of increased funding to help cover total costs. The cost of the two additional recommended rides would be approximately $7,000. It is not anticipated that the ride wristband revenue would increase by any significant amount as a result of these two additional rides. Therefore, the proposed cost of $7,000 to reduce the wait times could increase the city's net cost for the event by that amount unless additional funding sponsorship is identified. Staff is seeking City Council comments and direction regarding budgeting and initial plans for the 2017 Community Day in the Park. That concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments for Carrie? Ken?
I'm going to reserve some of my comments about the day itself, but can you explain the thing about the rides and how it was? Because I didn't see it at all, I just saw what was there. And what is the assessment, staff's assessment, of the selection of rides and, you know, who is riding and, you know, and this, you know, proposal to get two more rides? And the cost, I mean, that's looking at over $30,000 now, you know, for rides. So is that, I guess that's the going rate, or is that something that also needs to be studied?
So I'll address the cost first and then go to the selection and the layout. For the first Community Day in the Park, staff spoke with a couple of carnival vendors and ultimately selected the carnival vendor that also supports the St. Roberts Festival. We found that they were the most responsible, had the widest diversity of rides, and also were priced comparably, if not less than, the other companies that we contacted. With regard to the selection of the rides, we had five rides last year, and we chose to add an additional ride for a total of six for the 2016 carnival. We tried to get rides that would generally appeal to a wide age group. One of the comments that we got in 2015 were that there weren't enough rides for middle age students, for teenagers, and so we tried not to limit the number of rides for the little ones, but also tried to add a ride for teenagers. You probably noticed that we eliminated the bounce houses, we had some real troubles with those last year. They were, there was a great deal of interest in them, but they were deflating, and so we figured it was better to move forward with the rides. And I think in the end, that was a good choice because the rides were very well received. We got favorable feedback on the diversity of rides. The only criticism that we got, and there was a reason for why we did what we did, we actually staged as many rides as we could within the parking lot at the recreation center. And we would not do that again, we would spread them out a bit more than what we did, but we did that deliberately so we could reopen City Parkway as quickly as possible. We wanted to make sure that the rides that were on City Parkway could be reassembled quickly and to open the roadway. But in speaking with the police department and in getting input back from people who attended Community Day, there was too much compaction, there was too much congestion, so we will move those more out onto the roadway in future years.
Okay, so better idea, but so there was just a lot of kids there? $5,000 worth of kids? I mean, that's what I'm looking at as far as, you know, the payback and, you know, and I realize that we're paying, what, $15 or $10 for a bracelet? And there was no separate sales, it was just $20 at the day of the event?
Correct. $10 pre-10 or $20 day.
And what does that translate to? How many, I didn't do the math in my head, but how many kids are that?
So we sold approximately 830 ride wristbands. Roughly half were pre-sales and roughly half were on the day of the event.
So there was 800 kids there?
There were.
In that concentrated area?
Yeah.
Okay.
Almost 850.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, and that's one thing that I noticed is working in the Lions food booth is that you get, this City Parkway is closed and it's vacant. And I can understand the logistics of, you know, getting it cleared out and everything because that's my thoroughfare to get home. I think it could be, you know, it's interesting how you say you can spread out the rides more, but I think the footprint of the actual event needs to be a lot smaller because the food booths had nothing to do with the event. We were working our tails off, we couldn't even hear the bands. I didn't even know unless you, until we closed because we sold out, we started walking around and we saw, you know, a whole different area, you know, at the, you know, south area of the park, southwest park. So I think, you know, and then no one really paying, I didn't notice anyone paying attention to the band. It's like the band was out there in center field and this whole green area of emptiness. So, I mean, there's, I think all the components are there, it just needs to be closed in and so that everyone could, you know, enjoy each other. And I spoke to the city manager and gave her an example of the Millbrae Street Fair, how they have a stage and it's very concentrated with all their food booths in there. And yeah, maybe that's too tight, but I think we can go along, you know, into that sort of situation, but.
I appreciate your comments. We know definitely we had the stage moved back toward the tennis court too far. You're absolutely right, there was too much space on that lawn area between where people were setting up their chairs, and I watched how the sun moved throughout the day, people wanted to be able to sit in the shade. And we needed to pull the stage up probably 100 feet closer to the play equipment or to the walkway. And we will do that in future year.
Yeah. And as far as additional food, I don't know how the other booths were doing. I just know that there was a misunderstanding as far as drinks. And so if one organization is just selling drinks and not letting the other organizations or an agreement, then people are going to wait in line again or more so, whereas I think if there's an understanding of what we can actually sell out of our booths, we can take care of things a lot better. Plus the fact that it was the first time for the Lions that, working our tails off at the parade and then having to get going at the, you know, at the food booth, and even though it says Community Day starts at 1:00, it started once people saw the parade, which was probably 11:30. So it was more like noon where, and we were, you know, we were a little bit behind, but we'll be prepared next year.
One of the other things that we would like to do in preparation for a future Community Day is pull together all of the food vendors and service organizations a week or two before the event, just to coordinate logistics. We had a number of meetings with the Lions Club regarding the actual use of City Park for Community Day and brief discussions about the Posey Parade, but I think there needs to be a more robust discussion with everybody that's involved on that day.
And my fellow members of Lions Club are probably not going to like what I say, but we probably could use some cooperation from other organizations during the Posey Parade because we, we're down to 30 members and we get, you know, we get as many as we can, and there's a lot of work at the beginning of the parade and at the end of the parade, and not a lot happens in the middle of the parade, which is where it all gets bunched up. And so by the end of the parade, it's just a big group of people walking up the street. So there needs to be a lot more logistics in the parade and restaging and things too, and organization at the start too.
Anyone else? Rico?
Hello, Rico.
Go ahead.
So I understand about, because of the amount of youth that were there and wanting to increase to two rides, so I'm looking at it as, in a big picture, on some savings. Meaning, did we need two bands? I don't know. I mean, maybe the placement would have brought more engagement with that. Did we need to close the road? I know when I was trying to come through City Park the day before at 6:15, it was already, it was closed, which I knew was going to be, but the point of it was, if you looked at it through the night, you're saying, why are they closed? So obviously you had paid, I believe, security at either end, those are costly. So I think we look at things in the big picture too about saving here, saving there, but we obviously went over budget. And last year, did we hit budget or were we over budget? Do you know, by chance?
I do. The direct costs for the event were within budget and the overtime was within the operating budgets of the departments that provided assistance on those days.
So when you say that, do you mean it was out of the general fund overtime?
Correct.
Okay. So what I think I'd like to see going forward is when we have events in this community, and there are special events which of course the community is supporting, the city is supporting, but all costs, private, in the private practice or in government, we need to have all costs from A to Z, and that means staff time. So all staff costs, regular time and overtime, needs to be included in what it will cost us. So to me, that wasn't done here, and it hasn't been done. So I think we need to correct that going forward and be realistic. I think the Foundation had brought up about corporate sponsors. Certainly, we did have some at the Centennial and the Gala. I think that's something that we can look to, but I think that we have to look at it because we're, this is, we've done it a few times now, and we seem to be at the same scenario each time. So I think going forward, this is the time we're going to address that, we're going to get it right. But I do appreciate the Foundation's sponsorship this time, and I do know that they made it very clear to us that going forward, they would hope to bring more of the community. I think your hope was bringing more of the community in, not only being there, but supporting it as well, personally and financially, and bringing it truly a community event. And so I think that that is what we should be doing. So I don't have all the answers here, but I do think that we, that needs to be fine-tuned. I do believe the coordination, as you indicated, is a good idea. I believe with the Lions Club, I've only heard a few things, I don't think they're going to mind what you said, you'll hear it next Tuesday or something, but I think there needs to be coordination when it came to where the cars are placed or like that. I want to see a collective effort by everybody so that everything goes as smooth as possible because that's what it's about, as we know. And I think, you know, do we need lawn signs? I'm going back to Centennial Day, I don't know if we do. So there are things that I think we can do to tweak, but I think we need to open it up more and look toward the bigger picture and maybe a little spreading out as was indicated before. Thank you.
Marty?
It was a great event. For the first time combining the two, I think it was a wild success. Everybody, primarily, overwhelming majority of everybody I spoke to was smiling, had a good time. There was a couple of little things that are going to be worked out, it's already been talked about. I would look at maybe having a DJ instead of having a band, maybe having, inviting one of the schools to perform, that maybe draw some more people to the event. I would like to see, I don't know, I think with Community Day, like a Ferris wheel for like an adult ride, I think, and maybe that would get some more people to kind of, to ride. I mean, I didn't go on to any of the little rides because it was kind of hard to kind of fit in there, but my son absolutely had a blast. Of course, thank you to the San Bruno Community Foundation, and I'm sure that we can get some sponsors to help out. We just need to spread the word more and it was a great day. And the lines were long because everybody was hungry, you know, it was, everybody was hungry, and it's like I looked over at the line, I was like, wow. So I was thinking maybe if they had like a traveling cart, somebody just selling drinks, as they were driving up and down, it'd be really easy, so you'd have to wait in line. But all these little tweaks, you know, it's going to get better. There was a long line.
Right. Irene, anything?
I have a question for you, Rico, too. In this report, it talks about the overtime staff. So you're asking for regular daytime, the regular time that they put in beyond the overtime? Is that?
Good question. No, what I'm saying is, what it was sounding like, staff can correct me, is that if they feel the event's going to take $40,000 for all of the items to be rented, used, or what have you, that doesn't include what staff support will be on the day of, which is overtime. So if that's another $10,000 as indicated, that's not coupled to say, well, this event's going to cost us 50. Staff has said this is going to cost us 40. Well, in reality, it's going to cost 50 because the money's got to come from somewhere. So what it comes from right now is I believe it'll get allocated back out to the general fund line items for overtime. So if they only get $10,000 in a year, a part of that will be eaten up by that, but we, you know, do we always budget for that? So I think if the cost is going to be 50 from start to finish, then it's truly, that's what it is, it's $50,000.
Yes. So I think that's sort of what's indicated down below, is that this $49,002, so that's in total what the event cost. Okay, so I guess my question for the council is, if the Foundation is doing $25,000, the other $25,000, well, it wouldn't be $25,000, what did we make on? So the other $13,000 roughly comes from, where are we going to get that? And why I understand about asking for foundation, or not foundation, for sponsorships and all those other things, our staff already does a lot of that, they already have a full plate, and I don't know if I, I don't know if that kind of thing is something, another thing we should be doing and asking them to do.
You mean to work for free?
No, no, to go out, to go out and ask for sponsorships. I mean.
I see what you're saying.
So I don't know.
So your point is, can that additional item during the business day of them trying to send out letters or whatever? I mean, we kind of do that now, if I'm not mistaken, when it comes to polar bear plunge, when it comes to other activities in the community. I always remember Mayor Franzella would say, you know, I wish the city would send me one letter with all the things they need so I can pick, but stop sending me like 12 letters in a year. So if that's one of the items and we send it to some of those individuals, I think it could all be done at the same time.
Okay, maybe, well then, next year, we're talking, actually not talking 13, we're talking 18 because we're adding, we're adding the two rides and the.
If we had a similarly successful event and the event was, it costed essentially the same, but with the addition of the $7,000 for two additional rides, and we received $25,000 from the Foundation, the net cost to the city would be 18, plus or minus $18,000.
Without any sponsors?
Without any sponsors, that's correct.
So I think the mayor and I were talking about getting a dunking booth and might be a couple thousands.
I'd like staff to participate heavily in that.
Then it's 20, then it's going to be.
Senator Chair, I think Irene makes a good comment that it is, and this is, I think, the underlying issue here is that it's called Community Day, but it's a city event, it's run by the city. And I think the miss, maybe a misinterpretation or maybe a perception would be that the community is involved in the event, and not to say that the city doesn't organize and, you know, and, I don't want to say control, but, you know, coordinates amongst community groups. And that's something I saw as far as a Community Day with that, it would be more than just a few service organizations. I envision, you know, a college, a junior college, you know, an elementary school group, private school group, you know, various groups involved in the day, in that we can be, and then representatives are part of that committee. I know it was a fast track to plan this, this one event, but if we're going to go move forward in an annual event of Community Day slash Posey Parade, we could start tomorrow as far as gathering a group and saying, okay, this is our Community Day, we need to go out and find sponsors, we need to go out and find participants, we need to get people that are more in tune and more, have some expertise in maybe even getting a better deal on the rides, or maybe getting a free dunk tank or something. But we got to, I think we got to spread it out and not put it all on recreation staff to, you know, to coordinate it and then just look for bodies to work that day. And I think we need to go more towards getting a bigger group of which, you know, the city will coordinate, but the community has a hand in the entire event. So that's where I think it needs to go.
The only thing I'm saying is if it's an additional 18,000, we'll just use those numbers, then either the city says, okay, we have it in the budget, we're going to budget and allocate it because we're committed to this community's successful activity, and we try to defer the costs through community outreach and sponsorships. But one way or the other, my main point was, let's take what it truly costs, and that's what we either budget, we get sponsorships, we get foundation money, or collective of all three, but let's have the apples to apples and what it truly costs. That's what my point is.
Exactly. And I believe that's what staff was attempting to do. So this was not part of our budget deliberations last time, correct? I mean, I know there's a placeholder in there for $30,000, but that was supposedly from the Foundation, and now it's 25 from the Foundation and then an added 18,000. So I guess what the bottom line is, do you want to allocate $18,000 from general funds to this? And am I?
Yes. The 16-17 budget shows a total of $30,025 from the Foundation and $5,000 assumed to be gathered from community sponsorships. No general fund monies currently allocated, and the total cost, as Councilmember Medina pointed out, of $30,000 representing the anticipated, previously anticipated net costs, net of overtime and other staff costs.
Okay. So I'm just trying to make sure we're clear about what we're approving.
Yeah, I think, like you said, it wasn't.
No, I'm not ready to approve anything.
No, Irene's point is it was not budgeted. She's right, it was $36,000 last year, that was why I asked the question, are we sure we can do it for 30? Because it was 36 last time. Things usually don't go down, they go up.
Yeah.
So it wasn't a commitment, but it was, I think, we, you know, we believe we can. So obviously, it was more. So, and we want to increase, so that's either an amendment that can be made to the budget, or we look to sponsorships, or as Ken said, let's get the ball rolling. Let's see what we can get, and if we got to amend the budget halfway through the year, but let's give it a shot. Let's reach out and begin today.
If we don't get the 18,000, we don't get the two extra rides.
Right.
You know, we got to work towards that. We can't, we can't say we're going to do it and then come up short and yet let the city be the sugar daddy and, you know, and pay the bill. I mean, if we want to make it a community event, you know, with a generous help from the Foundation, then we got to work towards that and not expect the city to, you know, to pay the difference.
Right. Anything else, Marty?
Would this be, would this fall under the Project Pride realm of the subcommittee there to kind of, kind of push in getting sponsors and working with staff? Is that?
I said they could sit at the tables, what he said.
Oh. Just curious, because we haven't met in a while, but it kind of seems like it would fall within that realm. I'll work.
Well, Project Pride consists of two councilmembers. If you, if that's the councilmember's desires, you can certainly assist in that manner.
It sounds like it.
I'll ask our cousin.
Okay. Well, at least we, they won't make mistakes on the last name, so that's fine.
Okay, great.
Excellent.
All right, my thoughts, I think what I heard tonight is a lot of talk about growing pains. You know, we had the Centennial celebration and it went off very well, and let's keep doing this, let's keep doing this, and it is growing. It has not only grown in the park, but it has increased the attendance of the Posey Parade, it has brought in some new people and marchers and all different kinds of participation in the Posey Parade. And the fine tuning, as Ken was talking about, maybe using City Parkway a little more expeditiously and doing all different kinds of things is, it's growing, and it's a lot of fun to see it. The other thing, just totally off the wall, and I had a thought the other day, I mentioned it to the manager casually, but, so we have the sale of Safe and St. fireworks, and they are in essence, with a lot of people that buy them in San Bruno, community and neighborhood events. And some people violate that in a dangerous way, and they get fined. And I'd like to see that fine money, when collected and whatever is collected, put towards Community Day in the Park. So. So just a thought, I don't know what those numbers are going to be. Eleven thousand dollars this year, doesn't mean we're going to collect eleven thousand dollars, but it's just a thought.
That means they have to get more citations out.
We have to be very aggressive chiefs.
And before Leslie speaks, the only thing I was going to say we all need to work on is repeating the weather that we had this year. That was ideal, that added to a good day.
Well, people congratulated me and I said I did my work in the background, so I'll keep doing it.
It's rained one year in the last twenty years, on the first Sunday of June.
Okay, Leslie, foundation?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Leslie Hata Mia, Executive Director of the San Bruno Community Foundation. And on behalf of this foundation, I'd like to congratulate the city and specifically the community services staff for executing an extremely successful event and for building the partnership with the Lions Club in combining the event with the Posey Parade. And all of the feedback we've heard about the event has been extremely positive. So we congratulate the city and are pleased to be a part of the event this year. Funding and the cost information you're hearing, we're also just hearing for the first time. And we're happy to, you know, continue a discussion with the city council about the foundation's level of support and our ability to help the city seek out corporate sponsorships. And so I would suggest that the foundation's subcommittee dealing with these projects and the city council's subcommittee meet in the near future and talk about next steps and funding opportunities for the next Community Day. And we're very open and willing to continue that dialogue. I just want to reiterate that the foundation is very committed to this event. In last year's community listening campaign, we heard throughout San Bruno, a desire for more community building activities like Community Day. And I think the outstanding attendance and the positive feedback we received about this year's event reinforces that sentiment we heard last year. So we are very supportive of continuing foundation support for the event in 2017 and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. Let Connie and staff maybe get some times together or dates and we can meet with the foundation, myself and Councilwoman O'Connell. David? Yes, excuse me, David.
Honorable Mayor.
Go ahead.
No. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. First of all, going back, Rico was our chair for the Centennial. And we had a spectrum of people from the community. We had a very large committee. And I thought that event was terrific. And then the rec department was the main focus of the second organizational one that happened this year. And I know how hard our director and her staff worked in the rec department. And immediately following the event, three or four weeks, we had our commission meeting. And we went through the same process evaluating. And I understand the concern for money. I also want to thank the foundation, I've been going to all their meetings, because their support has been significant. But we came up with many of the things and Carrie led us through the strengths and the things that we have to reevaluate. And that's, in every event, there's things that go on perfectly and there are things that have to be changed or improved. And I'm glad that Rico brought in, Ken brought up the idea of the money. But on the other side, the BPAC, all of us were there except for one person who was out of town. We interacted with seven to eight hundred people, children, adults and families. They had a fabulous time. And they told us that. And while they were doing that, we were talking about the walk and bike plan. So we were doing a double service because we had fun. We were giving out prizes and asking kids questions. We were giving out these cards, which you've seen before, that David and Paula and Matt and the architects were created. And this, we gave this out to as many people as we could. The San Bruno Walk and Bike Plan, how to contact us if there's a broken sidewalk or something that needs attention, all the emergency on the other side, the calling nine-one-one in the police department. And so our committee, I'm prescient, I think we have a great committee, the BPAC, because we're involved. One thing that I would hope, Ken, you would take back, I've been going to the Posey Parade since I was teaching at Allen School in the sixties. And before, they used to have a master of ceremony. When they come in the park, honestly, it's. I used to take it upon myself when they came in off Cypress into the park that way, and I'd say, troop four seventy-five, let's give it a big hand. Right now, they come in and there's nothing. I think we can infuse some enthusiasm and some camaraderie. And the rides were expensive, but I watched those kids. They loved being on those rides. So these are things that we talked about with Carrie. And I don't know what the plan is for next year, but she'll tell us. But I thought Community Day in the park was fabulous. And I agree with the weather comment, that was really good. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? All right, thank you for the report, Carrie.